All right, we are out of executive session. We are back to a regularly scheduled council meeting. Thank you for joining us, December 5th, December 3rd, 2024, at the Harvey Room. The minutes were put out on the November 19th meeting, circulated. Any discussion on the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Is this for the special meeting, or is this for the actual council?
Regular and special meetings. There's a motion by Vice President Belcher, second by...
Second.
Counsel Swope, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Abstentions?
One.
All right. And all information and recommendations, we're fortunate to have our own Kathy Hickie and Nate Kramer from Municipal Financial Services here to discuss the fiscal 25 tax classification. I would ask them to come up to the front if they can. Thank you. Denise, do you have this information?
Yep.
Thank you both for being here. Every year, we go through an exercise to discuss the advantages or disadvantages of staying with a single rate versus a commercial rate and a personal rate. It's, you know, we have a very much related on personal property taxes here. We have a small commercial base of under 6%. We're one of the smallest in the state. Makes it very hard for us to have a split tax rate. The advantages just aren't there. And other cities surrounding us, like Revere and Boston and Saugus and such, have that huge commercial base, which enables them to do that. But we're going to go through the exercise as we do every year and send the floor to you, Nate.
Yes, please. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
The TV.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Good to see you all again. So, the purpose of this meeting, as stated, is to select a single or split tax rate, whether to adopt an open space discount, whether to adopt a residential exemption, and whether to adopt a small commercial exemption. Slide three. I don't know who's controlling. There we go. Okay. Slide three is just the full and fair cash value from 24 to 25, and showing the increase. So, that first line is the residential class. From 24 to 25, it's a 4.4% increase over last year. And the second line is commercial, industrial, and personal property, showing about a 4.5% increase. And overall, the levy, the total value has increased about 4.5% from last year. Slide four. This is just something that I like to put in these reports because, as assessors, we work with assessed values, and assessed values are based on market values. So, this data here is from MLS. So, these are all sales that went through MLS, whether they're arm's length or not. I think it, you know, if you stare at anything long enough, it makes sense. So, I just like to have, this is, you know, show this, this is what the market is actually doing. And you can see, you know, the fiscal 25 values are based on sales that occurred in 2023. And I threw 2024 in there just to, just so people see where things are going. They're still increasing, which is surprising to me, based on everything that's going on. But I'd just like to throw that in there to show the fiscal 25 values are based on calendar 23. What's causing the market to increase? Despite high interest rates, there's still high demand. High interest rates are contributing to low inventory. No one wants to move and give up their, no one wants a 7% interest rate when they have 3.3 or 2.7. And just overall, there's a housing shortage in the greater Boston area. Slide six is just a breakdown of what the average single-family bill and value is for fiscal '24 versus fiscal '25. Not a huge increase. The average assessed value from 24 to 25 only went up about $10,000, which is, which is, if you look at, so when we do assess assessments, Massachusetts requires you to be at 100% of market value. Most cities and towns run an median of around 95%, because if they ran it at 100%, that means half the town would be overvalued. So, if you compare the fiscal '25 average assessed value of 697 versus slide four, average sale price in 2023, actual market sales, 759, it's about where I would expect that number to be. Slide seven is commercial, industrial, and personal property values. That's just comparing the '24 values and bills to the '25. Again, slight, slightly larger increases than the residential side, but not, I hate to say, not much, because obviously, it's taxpayers' money and everything means a lot. But we've seen far greater increases in a lot of other communities. Slide eight. This is the fiscal year 25 levy limit. We get to the levy limit by taking the '24 levy limit, adding the 2.5%, which is allowed by law. And then on top of the 2.5%, we add new growth. So, new growth is our properties that have never been taxed before, whether it's a new building, or somebody added a deck that wasn't there before. And this, for the second year in a row, I think is about double what it had been in years past. And that's due to the work of Kathy and Diane in the assessors' office. They're just finding so much that wasn't picked up in the past. So, that brings us to the '25 levy limit. There's a debt exclusion of 3.6-plus million, which brings the FY '25 maximum allowable levy to 39 million, 339 and change. So, slide nine is just a comparison of surrounding communities. Of all the, really, every other one on this list except for Nahont is a city. Nahont being the most similar, I would say, because they also have no shift. But it's just a breakdown of, you know, where the neighboring communities are at. And it also, at the very bottom line there, shows the state average. So, Nahont's right around the state average. I mean, it's right around the state average. I'm sorry. Nahont, tie it. And that's the end of my presentation. I can take any questions you might have, or you can go right into...
Well, we really appreciate you taking the time to come here tonight. And it's an exercise that needs to be done, and we appreciate, again, the time. And, you know, it is, we're in a precarious position. You look at Boston, for example, and they have a, you know, a split tax rate, and one's $9, one's $18. And you look at Revere and Saugus, and, you know, it's pluses and minuses of everything, right? I mean, we like our community the way it is, but it would be great to have some more commercial business, so we could shift the burden a little bit. In our situation, it feels like if we shift the burden, it hurts the taxpayers even more, because now the prices go up, and now that's non-tax deductible money that's being spent. But I will open it up for questions, if anybody has something. Mr. Counsel Munson.
Thank you, Counsel President. Thank you, guys, for your presentation. It seems as though to change the tax rate for the commercial industrial properties would have very negligible effect. So, even if you were to jack it and say, "Well, those businesses are going to pay," it would make such a small impact, being that it's such a small percentage. So, you didn't, you've, you didn't come out and say, "We believe in a single rate," but that's basically what you're saying?
We're actually not allowed to recommend a shift.
Oh, is that right?
That's, I guess, that's you guys.
I see.
But I will say that...
Based on this fact.
Even with a shift, the residential class is still required to pay a certain amount of the whole levy. So, even if, even if you were to adopt a shift, you're so predominantly residential that you wouldn't be able to shift that much.
Right. So, I was just making that point, too.
Yeah. I think Reading did it last year, and they could do like 1.03 or something like, it was nothing. They couldn't, it wasn't even worth doing.
Thanks again.
And looking at the numbers in the past, it's, it would have an impact on a single-family home of somewhere between $10 and $20 a year, and it would have an impact on the small commercial business of between $300 and $400.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, again, thank you so much for your input. We will make our decision based on this, and, again, we appreciate your time.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have two public hearings tonight. First one is the Town Council appropriates a sum of $368,000 to pay for the design and engineering costs of water main replacements. We will open the public hearing, get a brief description from Counsel Cala. Counsel Cala, giving you a little... I'm not really a motion, a demotion. A big D motion.
That's a demotion, yeah.
So, the purpose of the motion is that the funding is to design and engineer the listed water main replacement projects that are on the 5A capital plan, so that we can create shovel-ready projects, so that when the capital plan is adopted or voted in the budget each year, we're ready to move on a project and not have to lose a year to engineer and design. The funding source is the local water system assistance program from the MWRA. It's a 10-year, zero-interest loan. So, it's, it's a great way to fund, you know, it's needed work. I mean, you can't stop these projects without the engineering and the design. So, that's the purpose.
And it would have an impact on water rates of roughly 8, 8.5 cents, which is about 1/3 of 1% on the current rates. And it did come out of committee, so I will ask the committee chair to have a brief discussion, then open it up to the public for questions.
Sure. The Finance Committee met and discussed this, and we came out with a favorable recommendation. Like Director Cala said, it's a zero-interest loan, which is arguably the best way to pay for things like this. So, we appreciate the identification of funding for this. Thank you.
And I'd like to open it up to the public for anybody who's a proponent of the motion. Close that part of the hearing, open it up for anybody who opposes the motion. Close that part of the hearing. Any further discussion on the council on this? All right, and we will be taking this up in old business. So, I will close that public hearing, open the second public hearing. The Town Council vote to authorize the town to accept and expend the amount of $475,000 in the form of a grant from Clean Water Trust. Director Cala.
So, this is a fully reimbursable grant. It will help us meet the mandate and requirements of the DEP to identify all of our remaining landline services, water services, as well as turn them from paper logs into electronic logs, which is a requirement of the DEP. It will also get us a GIS map layer for our water distribution system to help us with future asset management and, again, is fully reimbursed.
Vice President Cala. Jesus, I'm getting my name mixed up. Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. Again, this came out of finance with a positive recommendation. It will have no impact on the water rates, and I think one of the exciting pieces of this is the GIS mapping as we move towards more capital projects and long-term planning. I think that's going to be really helpful to the community.
Any proponents of this wish to speak? Yes?
Totsacko Precinct 2. I'm not for or against, I'm just curious, what a reimbursable grant, what?
So, it's, you do the work, you pay for the work, and the state gives you it all back.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close that part of the public hearing. Any discussion on the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Public comment. Public comment number one of two. Yes, Mr. Gill, President.
I wanted to read a letter that I had sent to the council regarding the location of the fire station.
Please do.
I can figure out how to use the phone. Good afternoon, members of the council. Regarding the quote "fire station discussed next steps" and quote "middle school discussion," demolition, the agenda items that are on your meeting, council meeting tonight, in my opinion, the old middle school site is not appropriate location for the new fire station. It is not an appropriate location within this residential neighborhood. For many reasons, this site should be removed from the CBD and returned to residential use, to be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. In my opinion, the rezoning of this neighborhood to allow for construction of two-family homes facing Waldemar Ave and Pauline Street would complement finish and finish off, oh, there my line, would finish off an inappropriate mandate as well as produce much-needed tax relief. A strong request is given the above, that you do not vote to construct a new firehouse in this possible. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. I would welcome a call from any of you to discuss this matter, including your thoughts of the future use of the middle school possible. Right, that helps me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Vigo.
Yes.
Jacked out precinct, one of, first of all, I'd like to give this information to Counsel Woman Swope. She asked for the information, but nobody came up with it. It's information that I haven't discussed with you, but it was, you were interested in sale of land, walkways, et cetera. And so, I didn't want to discuss it privately, so that's the first me and you know about this, and the rest of the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Short list.
That your CVS receipt?
Yeah. Very short list. I have four items on the list. On the firehouse, first of all, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
The firehouse on Pauline Street should be reevaluated to, to find out if we can fix this building. It's a four, it's considered a 400-year building, the way it was constructed, 100-year building. There's so many 400-year buildings in the state, too numerous to list. The way it was constructed was to anticipate that the wood floor could be removed in a certain number of years. Wood floors failed. But instead of, instead of fixing the wood floor or removing and fixing it, they poured concrete over it, which was a complete mistake, but that's 50 years ago or so. So, my thinking is, go back and fix the wood floor. Let's get, let's reevaluate the situation, get some bids. I don't think we have bids yet to fix the floor. I know we've had engineers there, but they don't set the bid cost. So, to get bids to fix the floor would be appropriate, so we can have the center fire station be right where it is right now. The land at 141 Pauline Street, which is the classroom site of the middle school, has not been surveyed. On the new designs for the firehouses, it states that surveys were taken, and the cost of the surveys were $20,000 apiece. I know nothing's been surveyed there. I checked my notes, I checked my paperwork. When they put the cost of the survey in, it has been surveyed. So, I said 10 times now in the last, it is, survey the property, and you might be able to do something with it, sell it, design it, or otherwise. That's number two. It seems, number three. It seems according to, I got about one more there. It seems according to recent votes, that the people that pay the bills do not want to have their taxes to become higher. We've had two votes so far, and they've lost by substantial numbers. I don't see things changing in the near future. You know, we want to design a firehouse here, we want to design a firehouse there, but when push comes to shove, I don't think people are going to empty up, you know, 25, 35, $40 million for a new, I don't think it's going to happen. So, I've got to go back to the old firehouse and find out if we can fix it. Please do that. Very annoying. What else? Oh. I brought the toilet paper, just in case Mr. Munson starts talking shit.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Money from Massport.
Your time is, your time is over. Your time is done.
I don't believe it.
Mr. Dowd, your time is done.
Oh, I'll mention it again.
Thank you. Marcy.
Hi, Marcy Hamilton, Precinct 2. I wrote my thoughts down. So, I did remember them. Hi. Dear council members, I'm commenting on the vote that was taken last meeting. I understand you voted against the planning board's recommendation, and I understand that's how democracy works. As I thought about this vote, I was reflecting on this town. For those of you who are born here, you have a lovely memory. And for those of you who have moved here, I say welcome. Again, I was looking at my thumbnail. I don't know why, but I'm always looking at my thumbnail when I think of Wicker. And I had a thought. I see one side, it's almost like an epiphany. I see one side of my nail, and that is, the state runs the DCR, right? The DCR is telling us what we can do with our beaches. I see the Department of the DEP telling us what we should do with Ural Beach, state-run. I see the Mass Water Resource, Mass Water Resource, carrying down at 7:00 in the morning toxic trucks into our town, through our streets. Something could happen, as you might know, you said it was a, it was a toxic plant, through our streets every morning at 7:00 AM. And rather than using the pier that was built, they travel through our streets. I see Mass Port on the other side of us, and they are encouraging and building their roadways closer to our shores and affecting our health and well-being of our citizens and the air that we breathe. When the 3A law was enacted, I don't think we should have been surprised that they would try to mandate our zoning, because that's what the state does, they mandate things. We have little to say in what the state does to our community, and I urge the board to keep the public aware and put on the agenda at each meeting an update as to the negotiations with Mass Port, MWRA, as well as DCR and the DEP and their actions. As far as the zoning and appeals board process in our town, I hope every citizen, and I say this truly, should be aware and attend those zoning board of appeals meetings, not just if the development is in your neighborhood, because what the zoning board of appeals does affects this 1.6 town. And I will tell you from experience that big properties are coming up for, I mean, big properties are now becoming available to our town, and how they are shaped is going to shape our community. We are, as big properties become available, we should fight to keep our town safe and quaint and fiscally sound. And I will tell you from personal experience, if you don't like the appeals board decision, get an attorney to take on the battle and help to keep our town and its charm alive. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marcy. Mrs. Sack.
Totsacko Precinct 2. Just decided that Precinct 2 is the only winter precinct that went along with every other county in the country in moving closer to Donald Trump. Thank you very much. Abandonment. Any elected council member shall be considered to have abandoned their office. If that person has failed to appear at more than one-half of all regularly scheduled meetings of the full council over a one-year period, if the office is abandoned, the office shall be deemed vacant and shall be filled in the manner provided in Section 2.11. An allowance for exemption to this rule may be granted by a vote of a majority of the full body of the town council. Why do I read this? I'm happy to see that on the agenda tonight, there will be a discussion about attendance. I'm hoping there'll also be a discussion about conduct, being on time. And I also, just again, want to remind you that if you are abandoned, if you are missing enough meetings, you are actually going to be, by the new charter, or by the new change of the charter that we engaged in, the ordinance with you committee, and the new rule that we came up with, you will be asked to leave. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lois.
Lois Baxter, Precinct 2. I'm here to speak tonight about the new fire station, and if you vote on it. I speak tonight on endorsing the Pauline Street location for the new fire station. It is the perfect location for entering and returning to staging using the Brookfield Road. You asked the people to pick their preference, and we picked Pauline Street. The foundation, water, sewer, and electrical lines are already there now to save money. The location, big enough for a future police station, which is also needed. You don't need more housing on Pauline Street site. Get rid of the old gymnasium to accommodate the police at a future date, building in phases. Use the new gyms built with new schools. Everywhere you look, there is more housing happening. Veterans Road, Kirby's, possibly Littier's. Then you can use the old fire station on Pauline Street and Shirley Street if you need additional housing. The old police station should go to Pauline Street. Councilors really need to start thinking about our future in Winter, trying to get in and out, et cetera. That was what people elected you to do. The traffic is horrendous any time of day, even worse if the Revere exit is closed and flooding issues due to climate change. If you build on Walden Street, you are taking parking away from the rink. Ingleside Park function fails. Walden Street apartment tenants park there when flooding occurs in their parking lot, stopping traffic to back the fire engines in and out, causing more traffic problems for parents picking up their kids at school, plus the cost of moving the basketball courts. I hear the council say we need to think about possible funding opportunities for the town. But what is more important than giving our fire and police a better facility as they risk their lives day in and day out to protect us? We have spent tax dollars building new schools, tennis court, Miller's Field, DPW. Now is the time for our fire and police department. Please vote for the Pauline Street. It is the best and only choice. I'd like to note that the police and fire also do a lot of volunteering for the town. Santa Fire Training, Police Explorers, Senior Center Function Barbecues, on our children, our future police and fire department employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we have Zoom.
Yep. Eugene, Attorney Kozinski. Do you want to unmute?
Motion to allow. Yes. Before the attorney speaks, is there just a motion to allow non-citizens to speak during public comment? Motion by Counsel Tassinari, second by Counsel DiMarco. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Yes?
Thank you, Director Alon. Thanks for having me here tonight. I want to speak. I've introduced myself before. My name is Eugene Kozinski. I represent Bill and Gina Edgids, residents at 76 Summit Avenue in Winthrop in your town. Here tonight to comment on the release of the right-of-way from Summit to Sagamore. I've introduced sort of the backstory before. I'm not going to take you through every detail again. I do want to speak a little bit about the Department of Public Works Subcommittee hearing. I'll just remind you of some of the things that took place during that meeting. In this meeting, the director of the Department of Public Works indicated that the entire path from Summit to Sagamore was in disrepair, and he further indicated that, should this not be released, it should actually be closed. Mr. Cala further estimated the cost of repair at $150,000. This did not include the cost of upkeep in the instance of repair, or whatever else would need to be done going forward for the path. I implore you respectfully to consider the feasibility of the cost of the repair of this path and the upkeep, and remind you that simply releasing the path back to my clients will come at no cost to Winthrop. They will thereafter build a driveway, which has the effect of removing 40... They will thereafter build a driveway, which has the effect of removing four to six cars from the street. I've heard a lot about parking being an issue in the town, so I thought that this would actually be helpful. I also just want to respectfully remind you that the only path on the agenda is the path by my client's house. This doesn't necessarily have a set precedent, but this is a path in disrepair that my clients have a very good plan for in the future and one that will be very cost-effective for the town of Winthrop. I'm happy to answer any other questions that anyone may have, but that's all I need to say at this moment.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we will move on to correspondence. Denise.
We had one letter from Attorney Brian Perrin and opposing the Summit Avenue pathway being approved upon. And that's all I received.
All right. Committee reports. Vice President Balt.
Is it possible to read that letter into the record?
Sure, it was sent to the, I sent it to everybody today.
I think it would be helpful to have it written to the record.
Should we read the whole letter?
Are you ready? I'm afraid, Denise. Dear Winthrop Town Council, I am writing to express my strongest opposition to the citizens' petition seeking to purchase public land or extinguish the town's easement for any portion of the public pathway on Summit Avenue. These historic pathways have been in existence for well over 100 years, serving as vital corridors for public access and contributing to the unique character and charm of our town. Spread throughout Winthrop, these pathways are essential for accessing our businesses, beaches, and neighborhoods. Their value far outweighs the request of any individual seeking additional parking or private use of public space. Allowing the extinguishment of this easement or sale of any portion of this public pathway would not only erode our town's history, but also set a dangerous precedent. Every inch of our public pathway we lose diminishes our connection to the past and our ability to move freely and conveniently throughout the community. This petition initiated by a local landowner will likely encourage other individuals to seek similar exemptions, potentially leading to gaps in our network of pathways and even land-locking portions of public easements or land. I strongly urge the town council to consider the long-term consequences of this petition and to deny it in order to preserve the integrity of our historic pathways. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter. Thank you, Brian Perrin Esquire.
Committee reports. Finance.
Thank you. The finance committee met before the meeting this evening. We talked about the two motions that came up during public hearing about the $368,000 to pay for the design and engineering costs of the water main replacements that are included in the capital plan, as well as the authorization of the town to accept and expend the amount of $475,000 from a grant from the Clean Water Trust. Director Calla gave us the same information we all got during the public hearings. They both came out with positive recommendations. We also got a preview of the tax classification presentation that was very helpful. And in the discussion of that, I had said that I would like to see some data on what a residential exemption would look like for Winthrop. I don't think right now we have the mix of non-owner occupied housing that that would be super beneficial, but I think it's something we should keep in mind to help lessen the tax burden on our residents.
Thank you. Moving on, school department report. The school committee met last night and there was only one item on the agenda, or there was two items on the agenda. One was just to approve a warrant and the other item was to discuss thoughts on the override question that was on the ballot in November and steps moving forward. The talk was, the discussion was to put, to ask the council to put another override question on a ballot sometime early next year. And they are going to schedule, or they have scheduled a special school committee meeting at Winthrop High School next Monday night at 6:30. And that will be at the Shapiro Center at the middle high school. And it will be a public forum atmosphere, encourage people to attend. At that meeting, they will continue to discuss thoughts moving forward on an override. The thought is that they will probably vote on what type of override they would like to request the council to consider and the timing of that override vote. So I do encourage people to go to the Shapiro Center at the Winthrop High School next Monday evening. There will be, there will not be Zoom capabilities at the, at the high school, but we are hoping that it will be carried live. If not, it will absolutely be taped. So I encourage people to attend. Town manager's report has been circulated to the public as well as the council. I will open the council up to any questions regarding any information on the town manager's report. We didn't want to read that? No? It could be fruitful.
I can add just one thing.
Yes.
One thing I didn't include there, I just wanted to bring up, is a while back, we had authorized the funding for the sidewalk study. Director Call and I did receive a draft copy of that report, so we're going to, the company Benish, we're going to, in the future meeting, hopefully the next, you know, couple of meetings, we'll schedule them to come in to give a presentation of the sidewalk study and then obviously make that available to the council and the public. So I just wanted to, that's the only thing I didn't include in there.
As a swap.
A couple of things. One is, I read your report and I'm hoping and I understand that your, that your job is made harder, I guess that's the best way to say it, if this town does not accept and vote for a 3A. I understand that's harder. But I'm hoping that you will carry our concerns the best you can to, to the governor and those who represent her in helping her understand the way this town operates is very different than some of the other towns. And so if you can find compassion in trying to help them understand that we're not a negative force in the Commonwealth, we're just trying to make our town safe and support the nature of what we have here. Number two, the sidewalk study that you mentioned, since we're working on pathways, you and I just briefly talked about it, but anytime that you can include this notion of pathways and all that in your sidewalk work, I think it would be helpful.
Yep. It wasn't in this study per se, but I will in the future, for sure.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Yello.
I think the vice president.
That's okay.
Okay.
Age before beauty.
Just following up on that related to 3A person, and I have a couple of non-3A questions. I assume we have not had any formal correspondence with the Attorney General since the vote at our last meeting. And so I'm assuming that's true.
Yeah, no, we have, because we're technically not out of compliance yet, not until the 7/31st, correct?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure from a policy standpoint that any written communication that we send to the Attorney General or anything we get in return is immediately distributed to the council and posted on the website. You've done a great job in that as well, but I think it's important for us to all stay updated on that. I wanted to sort of just go through a couple of things, both for you and if I may, with the town attorney. The first is that, you know, unfortunately, at the last meeting, we didn't ask for a formal presentation from the planning board. But I looked at, I had had surgery just before that planning board and wasn't able to attend, but I did watch it on TV. I was able to do that and compare that to the discussion at Sound Council. There were two comments that I thought were, I want to just get clarification about whether my interpretation is correct. One was about the CBD and whether the guidance that was read to us at the meeting on the 19th about all the things that have to happen to 3A, which sounded pretty, to me, imperialistic about you must do this, must do that, et cetera, et cetera, are in fact irrelevant with respect to our negotiated settlement, draft settlement with the state wherein they said they are accepting our zoning as is, with the exception of the minor parking thing.
Correct.
So am I correct that the letter from the Commonwealth that accepts our zoning and the CBD as is means that all of the other language that was read, which is if, which is if you read the precedent, if you intend to create a new mixed-use development is not applicable to us? Am I correct on that?
You talking about the additional language in the guidelines?
In the guidelines, yeah.
Okay.
That was read. So we are not impacted in any way by, in the proposed planning board solution. The planning board said repeatedly during, as I'm looking at the video, that the CBD is not going to be a 3A district and not going to be subject to the mixed-use regulations that are there, that they have in fact accepted our zoning as a replacement for their guidance. That's my interpretation, what the planning board said.
Yeah, that's a true statement.
And that's a true statement. Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to sort of, it's more of an educational thing. There was a lot of discussion at both that meeting and our meeting about minimums and no maximums. And again, I went through all the documents and again, I'm not a specialist in zoning. But the minimum language that members of the public have been using was the minimum of 882 units that they expected us to figure out how to deal with. The planning board believes they've come up with a solution that gets to zero. The fact that there are, that there are no maximums was not accurate because when we in fact rezone any of those three big parcels, the two up in the Highlands and the one down of Governor's Park, we were creating a cap on the number of zoned units. And therefore, that's the maximum that could be developed under the new zoning levels. And I'm assuming that's correct, a correct interpretation.
Those overlay districts.
Yeah, the overlay districts. Okay. So I just wanted to, want to make sure of that. The other dimension of that, that was technical. The other dimension of that is, you know, we, if we don't do anything between now and December 31st, we are effectively have made a council decision to not fulfill the obligations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts law. Okay? We each took an oath of office that includes respecting and fulfilling the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, and that's okay. The council can decide anything the council wants. My question is, and if you don't know this, by the appreciate, someone investigating, looking at it, we have liability protection as public elected officials. Okay? When we collectively take an action to purposely say we are not going to comply with Commonwealth law, is there a risk of a, of an erosion of our liability protection? Because I'm worried and I think everybody else should be worried if that's the case. I don't know if that's the case, but that's sort of the side of me that sort of worries about risk. And wondering if we could get some clarity from the Attorney General's office about that, because I think that's an important question. I would be reluctant to engage the Attorney General at this time on a point such as that. However, I can tell you what I know for what I know. And that is, the vote that was taken by the council was taken in its representative capacity. So I think when you get down to the, sort of the basics of your question, if I understand it correctly, do you have personal liability? The answer is no. I would say though, that in dealing with cases like this, not a 3A case, but you know, whether it's a civil matter or it's a criminal matter, there are acts of omission. So for instance, the council could have said, we're letting 31 December go by and we're not going to do anything. That's an omission. Are you in violation of the law? Well, technically, the town would be in violation of the law. And what kind of response would that evoke? That would probably evoke a response from the Attorney General's office on behalf of the governor and his staff to prod us to do something. But then there are acts of commission. Have you affirmatively done something to avoid an obligation? That, in my view, is more likely to evoke an enforcement action where the Attorney General would come in and say, you had until the 31st of December. Not only did you not comply, you took an affirmative step not to comply. So that would more than likely invite a lawsuit from the Attorney General's office on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, asking for a court order, ordering us to do that. That's what happened in Milton. And that's why they're up in this, in this SJC. Are you personally liable? No. You have qualified immunity, you're indemnified, it was in your representative capacity. And I hope that that answers your question. But there's a broader dimension to that though, in what your expectation might be. That hinges on two things. One, what does the SJC do in sort of 1.5, is how does the state interpret what their duty is as a, as a result of that? And the other is, how hard do they want to play? So I don't know what, I don't know the answer to the second one. Nobody knows the answer to the first because the SJC has a rule. But I, I wouldn't be worried too much about insurance policies being, being hit or anybody being hit by any, any personal liability.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Vice President Balt.
Thank you. I just want to request that if the next town manager's report, we can have an update on the DEP Ural Beach situation and any next steps we can take as far as beach nourishment plans that are under the ACO and stuff.
Yep, we're under the ACO now.
Okay.
And then we're just moving forward, waiting for the, getting some pricing on the sieve analysis so we can spec out the kind of material we have to do to put the coastal burn back in. So that's where we're at right now. But I will give you more information.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councilor Tassanari.
Town manager, thank you for this report. I noticed the last bullet deals with FY26 budget planning process. I was wondering if we can't squeeze it into FY25 and we need to get it into FY26, we want to start that fiscal impact study?
Yep.
If you haven't got an RFP drafted yet or in the works, we'd like to, to ask you to, to start that, that process, as well as start looking into who can provide us with a consultant or a team that can work on a master plan for the town for the next, you know, 10, 20, 30 years. It seems to be, seems to me that we are making these isolated silo decisions that really have no contribution to what we want our town to look like in 30 years. And it's, it's getting dangerous. And I mean, it seems like that's the way we've operated for the last 30 years and it's gotten us pretty much nowhere. So we really don't, I don't want to be flying blind as we make these decisions.
Right. On that, we do have a few master, obviously, plans in place. We have the WIN 2030 and a few others that have been done before then. So there is some work out there, I would say. So maybe we look to update that.
So that WIN 2030 though, that only dealt really with the CBD and the, in that, that area over there. It didn't deal, it wasn't really a town-wide master plan though. And we really need to start considering, which we didn't consider in that, in that WIN 2030 is, is the climate resilience, which is going to come with a huge price tag.
Yep. There is a small piece in the climate resilience, I've read that, you know, cover to cover. It's, it's not a lot. I will give you, it's, it definitely needs to be more elaborate.
Probably why I missed that one.
What I would say is we have, maybe work with the council president, try to get that on, because that would require a whole council vote. That's a little bit bigger project. And if that's the direction that town wants to take, I would need direction from the entire council just to give me that and, you know, go from there. The other one, we've already sort of got some initial pricing and I'll get that to you.
Excellent. Thank you.
But the other latter one, I would say I'd look for the entire council to weigh in on that. Thank you.
Great.
Councilor Munson.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Tony, for your town manager's report. I'd like to go on record for saying it should be read aloud just because I like hearing it. I think it conjures up more conversation. And our purpose of these meetings is not just to make decisions, but also to educate and to share information. So I'd like to go on record for that. But on to the actual points. I thought that gathering over on Morton Street was great. So it looks like you guys did actually figure out where to put all the sandbags?
I will give Director Call all the credit. He's come up with a plan and a number that a little exceeds what we're going to order originally, so we'll have to get some more. But we're fine tuning that to see if we can get them installed and where the best, you know, best place to put them. But we have good interaction with the neighbors. We got a list from them, which houses wanted them, which ones didn't. You know, we included maybe a house across the street that's got a, you know, cellar basement well, you know, bulkhead area that, you know, we can block off just to stop the water from going down there. So yeah, I think we've got a good plan in place and we're going to look to implement that shortly.
Now, are those, are those permanent sandbags? Do they become the property of the...
the property owners?
That's why we did it this way. We didn't want to get into, you know, one of the, as you know, I don't know if you're out there, but we met on the gazebo, one of the homeowners down the street, you know, moves them in and out of their driveway, which gets to be cumbersome. And they're heavy. And every time the storm's over, they got to be able to get in and out of their house, right? So the thought process that we talked about with them was putting them up against their foundation. That's going to allow, you know, it's not great protection, but certainly slow maybe the water from getting down into their crawl space or basements.
Right.
And stop what happened with the wave action when the cars go through, slow down that water from getting in there. So that was, and those could stay there. You know, if they wanted to move them around later, they could, but the thought process, leave them there. So as we get these storms, you know, they'll have protection.
Was there a resolution about preventing traffic on, during floods?
We've been doing that all along. I mean, certainly we try to do a better job of that. But we do have, you know, DPW puts out barricades, we put them up. We've worked with Governor's Park to try to get that gate closed more frequently. So we're already taking steps to do that.
I just wanted to follow up also on some of the, like, one of the commitments you guys made was like to find the, the pipes that were going out and the gates, the, what's the exact term? I can't remember.
Tide gates.
Tide gates are obviously non-operational because the water comes in. Do you know, so did you?
They're not non-operational, they don't exist.
Yeah, I get you. You identified them, right?
All six, all along that corridor.
And then the next step was to get pricing for the parts and materials to get it, and then also get bids for actually fixing?
The next step is to fund the engineering. We got an engineering quote. Fund the engineering and design.
You did get the quote?
We got the quote.
Okay, so then where, where, can we get that?
Bring that forward. Yeah, we're just trying to see what we have for some funding sources, then we'll bring it forward to the council.
Wonderful, wonderful, thank you. All right, well, it looks like we're, we're doing our best to protect our citizens. On, on the same note, if I'm not mistaken, an economic bill was signed into law that stipulates that we would be potentially one of 78 towns that are coastal communities that have $100 million set aside for us. And then Mara Healy signed it, legislature signed it, I believe that's four plus billion dollars, and it's $100 million for coastal towns, another $400 million for infrastructure set aside.
Yep. I'm guessing that'll come out via grants, so we'll have to, yeah.
But it's all stipulates, it's contingent on being 3A compliant.
Is it, really?
Yes. So it's not just... So I just think that it's important to keep up with what's going on and just keep us educated as well as the community. It's not just for the people that are looking. It needs, the whole town needs to know this. So I, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
I just want to point out one thing on the town manager report. I just, it is included in the packet. So the general public has it, if you know, we have the agenda packets with all the backup now, and the town manager report is one of the documents in there. So they can read it well before the meeting. I just wanted, it's not, you know, just seen by the council.
No, no, I hear you. I appreciate that. I just think for, you know, like, things happen when you speak out loud.
Counselor Swob, did you have a follow up?
Well, I just think if we're going to be discussing 3A, as Mr. Councilmember I always mentioned, that we'll have a discussion maybe in the next meeting, and then I'll be prepared to answer and respond to what Joe said. But I think we're, we're not discussing 3A, so.
No, we're discussing it because it was in the, it was on the manager's report, right.
And then it comes in the manager's report, so next time.
Yep, I just had it on there that we, we let the executive office of, for any of you didn't read the report, we just informed them, the executive office of housing liberal communities have the vote. Clearly, obviously, they were disappointed. But, you know, we told them we'd be forwarding a letter at some point, once we get closer to the December 31st deadline.
Counselor Tassanari first.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Just to follow up on Counselor Munson's question about the Morton and Banks design for the stormwater overflow, do we have any update on the girdlestone and tilestone engineering design? Where, what the next steps are? We have to appropriate additional funding?
Modeling is complete, the hydraulic modeling. We have a memo and a, memo and a report that I received late today. I'll be passing that out to the town manager tomorrow. And then we'll be discussing what's needed to continue with the updates, next phase of engineering.
We don't want to forget those folks on.
Nope, absolutely not.
And PICO.
Counselor Costigan?
And Pico, yeah. We don't have a, we don't have a plan right now for PICO, right?
PICO's part of the, it's, it's all one package. PICO, tilestone, girdlestone are all part of the stormwater design.
All the same design?
Yeah.
All the same engineer?
Yep. I mean, different designs, but it's all part of the same package, yeah.
Part of the same contract that we?
Exactly, yeah.
Counselor Costigan?
Thank you. Town manager, not to get too deep in the weeds on 3A, I mean, you know, it was brought up tonight, so I'm not going to go off on a tangent. I think enough has been said here. But with regards to Council Swob, absolutely, this, the representatives of this town, when they meet with the state officials, I think have to sell Winthrop in a special way, as it relates to, this is, this is a unique town. We are not in a hunt. We are not marblehead. We are the outermost crop of Boston, the east side of Boston. We take the burden of, of Boston with regards to Logan International. And again, I'm a broken record here. The M2B, again, the increased, you know, with, with traffic as it relates to 3A, that, that may or may not happen, depending upon who you talk to. But with regards to CBD, since it was brought up, regarding the vehicle and the buyout provision, if that was to go away, if that was overturned to 2014 provision to, to buyout vehicles down in the Senate Business District, would that, would that affect the 3A credit for 225 units?
No.
Not at all?
No, because the only change we made to that was that it couldn't be a special permit, it had to be site planned. So if you took the whole thing away, it would, it'd be irrelevant at that point, so.
We would still get the 225 credit.
Yeah.
Okay.
It wasn't the parking that was a problem, it was just the site plan approval.
Yes, yes, yes. And I mean, that, that, that stipulation with regards to the vehicles and the buyout and where that money goes and so forth and so on, will be discussed later on. But aside from that. And, you know, these, these issues didn't happen overnight to Counselor Max Tassanari comments, 30, 40 years. You know, here we are, this is the tip of the spear here, and we have the firehouse, we have the override, you know, after 15 years. You know, these, these problems didn't happen overnight. The infrastructure, the clap of valves, the, the ability for stormwater to drain properly, the infrastructure's collapsed. I mean, this is just sheer neglect. So again, this is due to neglect over the years. We're talking 30, 40 years, 20 years, less than. So here we are. So now we are faced with this, we're battling this here. So again, it didn't happen overnight. As far as the monies are concerned, as Counselor Munson mentioned, you know, that's yet to be seen. Again, as we mentioned, as I mentioned last meeting, we have a, you know, a national administration coming in here that is, isn't too kind to, to, you know, giving money to blue states as far as I'm concerned. That's just another issue to, to think about. But I, my last comment here, which I really wanted to say, I find it quite ironic that the, the state, with regards to question one, as it relates to transparency in this state, was unanimously passed. And what did they do several weeks after that passing of that?
We're just getting a little too far.
No, no, I'm just saying that Winthrop, Winthrop is ironically in line with the state legislature, with, they don't agree that question one is also a good deal for them. And again, 3A is not a good deal for Winthrop. I rest. Thank you.
If I could just make one quick comment, I mean, it was said twice tonight, but myself and the staff, we will always be the greatest advocates for Winthrop, and we will push hard to get any grant money we can, always. I mean, regardless of whether I agree with the vote or not, or whether I think, you know, there could have been a different approach, doesn't matter. We will always push hard for the grant money. So please don't ever doubt that, so.
Thank you.
Update in CDICR and policy committees. Board of Appeals, 63 to 69 Putnam Street and 50 Somerset Ave projects have been continued for more information needed. 34 Pebble Ave homeowner was granted relief for construction. Order license meeting is December 9th for renewal for liquor licenses, common vics, used car dealers. Commission on Disabilities, the commission is excited to report that the town has received a grant in the amount of $225,000 to help with the cost of the rear entrance ramp to being constructed and any interior work required located in the town hall parking lot leading up to the library. A Commission on Disability Resource Guide has been completed by the commission and is available in the clerk's office additionally online. Good Energy Electricity has informational, had their informational meeting last evening here to help with consumer questions. There, you can contact the town manager's office for more information or contact Good Energy directly. And planning board meeting, next meeting is scheduled for December 18th. Old Business. Town Council. Appropriate the sum of $368,000 to pay for the design and engineering costs of water main replacements. Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. Do you want me to read the full?
Unless there's a...
Is there a motion to waive the reading?
Motion to waive the reading.
Motion to waive.
By Counselor Aiello, one handed.
Second.
Second by Counselor Swob. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know, the ayes have it.
It's, it's quite long. But the brief description is that it's for $368,000 and a 10-year zero interest loan through the MWRA to be shovel-ready for the water main projects on Winthrop Street, Triton Ave, Siren Street, Hale Ave, and Brookfield Road, all of which are part of the five-year capital plan and water main replacement targeted projects. Like Director Cala said, we want to be ready to go when we're able. This would increase the water rate eight and a half to nine cents, but that wouldn't be for a year after we do the borrowing. And this came out of committee with a positive recommendation.
Came out of committee with a positive recommendation does not require a second. Any additional comments from the council? See, Counselor Munson?
Sorry, but just to summarize it for me, it feels like just a, a way to expedite this process of lead pipe removal for these specific streets.
This one's for water main replacements.
Water main.
Yeah, we want to have this designed done so we have a shovel-ready project. Like, you never know where potential, you know, grant monies could come from, or if, you know, we're ready on the capital plan, we want to have a shovel-ready project so we can expedite it if we have funds available. So that's why we're doing this. And using the remaining balance of a 0% interest loan to fund it, so.
It's for the design and engineering.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Tassanari?
Yes.
Counselor Costigan?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Aiello?
Yes.
Counselor Swob?
Yes.
Counselor DeRoz? Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Abstain. Town Council vote to authorize the town to accept and expend the amount of $475,000 in the form of a grant from Clean Water. Vice President Belcher?
All right, I will read this one. The motion reads, I move that the town council vote to authorize the town of Winthrop to accept and expend the amount of $475,000 in the form of a grant awarded by the Clean Water Trust to be administered by the town of Winthrop's Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. This grant payment is made from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Grant information is agreement number DWL 2425, DEP project number DWSRF 18929, or take any other action there too. So this is a fully reimbursable grant. As Director Cala mentioned, we pay for the work and then we're reimbursed by the state. There would be no impact on the water rate. It does include digitizing our records and creating a GIS overlay of our water infrastructure.
And this also came out of committee with a positive recommendation does not require a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Munson?
This is for lead, lead pipe removal. My apologies. Out of curiosity, how did you discover this?
I'll be, Steve?
We've been working, our engineer, Witten-Carren, has been working. So it's also, again, DEP mandated these actions, and they created a, a funding source to get it, getting it done. So Witten-Carren submitted the application on our behalf. Just need the authorization to borrow even though it's a fully funded grant.
Right. I'll never say no to a good grant that has no major strings attached.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing the unroll call vote, please.
Counselor Tassanari?
Yes.
Counselor Costigan?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Aiello?
Yes.
Counselor Swob?
Yes.
Counselor DeRoz? Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes, motion passed. Tax classification fiscal year '25 is a motion coming out of Finance. The town council motions that the town maintains a uniform tax rate for all classes of property for fiscal '25.
If I could just clarify, you're voting for, it's a shift of one, is what you need to say. It's a voting for shift of one. I wasn't sure what was in there, I wanted to make sure.
And also coming out of Finance, Vice President Belcher?
Yep, so the recommendation from Finance is choosing a shift of one, which would be a single tax rate between residential and commercial properties. We are not recommending a discount granted to open space, a residential exemption, or a small commercial exemption. As I said before, in discussion, I think it's prudent that we look at what a residential exemption would look like for our town down the road.
So that also came out of committee with a positive recommendation, so that is four items on that. Any discussion on it? Does not require a second. And I will just say, on the residential exemption, and it is something that we should look at as we go down the road. It's more applicable, and this is where, my understanding is, it comes in if you have multiple apartment buildings, right? And this is where we, we look at properties around town that are condominiums, and they're paying, you know, each condominium is paying a tax, which is pretty substantial. And apartment complexes are paying less, it's based on the value of the property. So this is where you could have a shift a little bit, but it, it only helps if you have multiple, if you look at cities like Rivera and Saugus and Boston where there's multiple major complexes. But as, potentially as, as the building shifts in this town, it might be something to look into. Any, so it's, it came out of committee with positive recommendation does not require a second discussion on it. Counselor Munson?
To further your comment, the exemption for residential, which isn't being discussed or voted upon tonight, but, I mean, it's just being discussed but not voted upon. But to further the...
Well, it's, it's part of this motion that we are saying no to the residential.
Exemptions, right. So we're just discussing it for futures reference. But the residential exemption would mean that an apartment building would potentially be exempt of the standardized tax rate?
No.
It means a shift in the burden that, that, that an apartment complex would pay a higher percentage where, you know, kind of like having a, a split rate where commercials would pay more, so it would be, but now we're at such a, I mean, it would be a less of a difference than a commercial, than a split tax rate would be, but, yeah.
And the shift of one, can you just clarify exactly?
The shift of one is basically saying we're going to a single tax rate.
Single tax rate.
Right, but we were on a single tax.
It's always a shift of one, but that's how you have to vote.
We're not shifting, we're just approving.
Anything outside of one is a shift. So like, as you saw on the thing, Boston, Rivera, 1.75, so that's, you know, a three quarters, so, yeah.
Learning the vernacular.
Just to comment on the residential exemption, it, it doesn't increase the amount of revenue in taxes the town gets, it changes the burden. So that basically, it has a slightly higher rate, and then people who live in the home they own are exempt and pay a little less. So it would increase the burden on non-owner occupied properties.
I get it. Any other discussion? Seeing the unroll call vote, please.
Counselor Tassanari?
Yes.
Counselor Costigan?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Aiello?
Yes.
Counselor Swob?
Yes.
Counselor DeRoz? Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes, motion passes. Fire station discussion. So we've had this discussion ongoing. We did send out a survey. I believe the survey results roughly, roughly 1,100 responses, roughly 550, maybe 650, Pauline Street, 550 or, say 550, 450, whatever it is.
Yeah.
So roughly 55% of the respondents favored Pauline Street, and 45% favored Walden Street. So we would like to get to the point where we can vote on this and, and pick a location and then go forward. The anticipation would be if we, if we were to go forward with a project, regardless of the location, it would be a debt exclusion vote sometime in early spring or early part of 2025. And, you know, we, we also included in the packet the cost of each potential project, the, the potential cost of Walden Street... cost of Walden Street was $35,678, and the potential cost of Pauline Street was $40,951. The buildings are very similar, the basic difference is the infrastructure that needs to be done at Pauline Street. This would also include, my understanding is, it would include a storage unit at Walden Street, which would not alleviate, but help in some way, shape, or form flooding that occurs in the Pillow House parking lot. It would also assume moving the basketball courts across the street to Ingleside Park, where the baseball field is currently now. The Pauline Street location would be at the top, basically at the very top of the hill near Wheelock and Waldemar. And I'm opening up a discussion now, and potentially taking a vote on this tonight. Hoping to take a vote on this tonight. Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. I think we've seen in the past votes that people are concerned about their financial well-being, so I think looking at the difference in cost between these two projects, I think it's prudent to look at the Walden Street station very closely. I also agree that the Pauline Street site could be used for a variety of other things, whether it's some housing and economic stimulus for the town. So I personally am leaning towards a Walden Street site.
Councilor...
Tony, how much for the building, for the old school building, how much are we spending, losing roughly a year right now?
The old middle school building?
Yeah.
It's about $65,000 to $75,000.
Yeah, it's between $15,000 and $60,000, somewhere in that range.
All right, I think we need to be realistic here. You know, I think the town sent a pretty strong message with their vote on the two-and-a-half override, as well as previous votes. I'm also, I agree with you, I'm in favor of the Wald, I like the Walden Street location, personally, that would be my pick. But we need a backup plan. What if we don't get the money that it costs to do that? Have we taken a look at refurbishing the firehouse if we don't get the money, and what the cost would be? What is our backup plan if we don't get the money? We don't have one.
We, well, you can't reuse the buildings, right? I mean, they don't, the current fire stations have already been proven, and the fire chief has spoken about it, doesn't meet current OSHA requirements, we don't have the space to do it there.
But if we don't get the money, if, then what do we do? We need to have a cheaper alternative as a backup plan.
That's certainly something the council can talk about on the road.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Councilor Aiello.
Well, I think we, I think it's premature to vote on a fire station, a preferred location. First of all, I think there's a lot of information missing that ought to be made available to the council. I can go through that in detail if you'd like. But my concern, you know, we don't have comps from other cities, communities, or recent construction prices, et cetera, et cetera, and I think that raw data ought to be made available, because in reality, when we go for the debt exclusion, there is no cap, and if these things start spiraling to a higher cost, that is just going to be passed on to the taxpayer, and it's going to really, really poison the waters for the next thing downstream. We've got to be very, very careful that we're confident about the numbers. But beyond that, I want to get back to something that Mr. Dowd said in public comment. I mean, we have gotten both of needed revenue raising items, and we've got beaten badly, and we don't know why. We're flying blind. We haven't done any surveys, we haven't done any focus groups, we don't know precisely why, and we're going to come back with bigger numbers and say, let's do it all over again, and expect that we're going to get, yahoo, let's do it now, and we've got two items coming at us. And I would suggest that there's a third item coming at us, and that's the stuff we've been talking about with respect to not just stormwater runoff to correct some of the flooding, but also the permanent barrier along Morton Street, also the flooding that comes from Fisherman's Bend Marsh, et cetera. Those are real costs that have to be solved simultaneously. I heard numbers informally that that's another $50 to $75 million. I don't know what the right number is. We haven't really, I mean, Councilman Munson is a little more satisfied than I am, but I don't think we've stepped on the gas to get the engineering done and get the permitting done and move in to replace the money we didn't get from the grants from both of the Marshes that are sources of flooding. We need to appropriate money fast for engineering and get that up, because we could have, right behind this, we could have a debt exclusion for another $50 to $75 million to protect people in their homes today. There are people who are trying to put their homes on the market, that call me up, in the neighborhood that is in my precinct, who are not able to get anyone to give them an attractive offer, because people worrying about the future of some of these neighborhoods. It is our obligation for something that has been building slowly, slowly, slowly over the last 15 years to finally say, we're going to fix this stuff. It's, you can't get out of town off down Pleasant Street, people are flooding in their basements, someone's going to die from electrocution at some point, God forbid. We really got to fix this stuff, and we really got to figure out, we got a free cash estimate finally from the state for last year. I say we ought to have a big discussion about what we do with that free cash. Maybe that free cash pays to give Steve all the money he needs to finish all the engineering for all the dimensions of those three neighborhoods and figure out what a capital cost is on a stat schedule, because it is just not fair. We've got four other neighborhoods behind these three neighborhoods. If we don't treat these three neighborhoods well, the others are going to say, well, what about me? I'm dead next, right? It is just unconscionable that we're not, as a council, I'm not pointing the finger at you, as a council, we are not making decisions to put the revenue where they belong. We're not being responsible for understanding, why did we get, you know, what's handed to us in the last two elections asking for more money? We need to make sure that, and this is going to relate to the, the school committee is not going to be happy with me, to get two sentences about a major override to this council to put it on the ballot with no analysis about where the budget has been, what the pressures are going to be, what happens if it doesn't pass, any alternatives, any innovations in terms of saving money, it's just, that wasn't helpful to the cause. And if it comes back to us, there's two sentences all over again, I'm not voting to put it on the ballot. Let's get some common sense here, because we're in danger of entering stupidville by keep knocking our head against the same brick wall and thinking we're going to get a different outcome the next time. So I think we should stop this discussion today and have a policy discussion about putting all of our needs together in a basket and thinking about a strategic approach to each one of them, and then move forward. But this, okay, let's do this here, let's do this here, let's do this, and let's not pretend that there's something happening a year from now, is, we're going to lose the public's confidence. They, you know, I'm old, someone votes me out next time, it doesn't matter to me, but somebody's going to have to come in here and sit in these chairs and try to figure out how to dig us out of the hole, and as Councilor Costigan likes to say, let's get Winthrop where it belongs to be. But we have no plan. We just keep banging into that wall. So we're not ready for this.
Any other discussion? Councilor Costigan.
Yeah, just to sort of, you know, work off of what Mr. Councilor Aiello said. Short-term goals, if anything, you know, I had the pleasure of meeting some people on, down off of Tilestone and that whole area down there and the flooding there, you know, looking at that, you know, can the town dig up $400,000 or $500,000 to maybe take care of that group of people? I mentioned Aqua Dam already, I mean, it's sort of, basically has been thrown to the wayside, Aqua Dam, at least it's some type of remediation plan, a mitigation plan for Morton Street. There's just no appetite for that. So I'm a little frustrated being on the climate...
Just point of order, we're discussing firehouse right now.
Okay, absolutely. To shift back over to monies, yes, $40 million for the firehouse, I think to Councilor Aiello's point, it's, I think, going to be a little tough to sell the middle school, and to Councilor, Councilwoman Belcher, as it relates to revenue stream, middle school, and, you know, just the appetite of the public itself, I think is a little tough. But we do, we do need a firehouse. But, you know, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the override for the schools have failed. So, you know, I'd like to be optimistic about the firehouse. But I prefer the Walden Street location, as I first mentioned here, as it related to the eight locations we originated with here back in May, that the basketball courts the best location, for all those reasons, so I'll rest it there.
Councilor Tascinari.
I'll keep it quick. Council President, I would echo Vice President Belcher and Councilor DeMarco, Councilor Costigan, saying that the Walden Street would be my preferred location because of the optionality we would still have with the middle school. But I do want to just jump ahead for a second and say we should include the possibilities of removing the middle school as is listed further on in this agenda that you've mentioned in the past as well, Council President. And that's all I'll say about the fire station.
Thank you. Councilman Munson.
I mean, we can't, we're doing the best we can to solve a lot of problems at once, and I do appreciate a good strategic vision. I think that's been said and asked for numerous times, and it does seem to be, we're just kind of hitting silos and individual problems as, one at a time, whereas we're trying to, we've got to tackle this as a big picture. There's no doubt in my mind that the fire station is a top, top priority. I felt as though it should have been done the previous time. We, you know, so as of right now, I mean, I don't want to be a part of prolonging the process, but at the same time, I do want to make sure that we are looking at this as the big picture. So I don't know if I added any value by saying all that, but I would say the Walden Street location would be wise as well for the time being.
Councilor Aiello.
I'd like to invoke Council President Johnson.
This has been on the, this is old business.
Let me say something else. We don't know where the basketball courts are, we haven't been, we haven't been given a drawing, we don't have any engineering or design plans or anything, we just don't know that these costs are anything but a fabrication, okay? We've got a bunch of numbers there, what do they mean, where do they come from, how do they compare to other people? We're voting on sending the taxpayer into noisville. And once they understand that, they're going to reject it all over again, push for more detail on both options so we know where we're going. You want to get, you want to think we got a blank check to give to the taxpayers? That's fine, go ahead and do it, but, you know, I'm voting against both.
Oh, we don't believe they have a blank check. This is the same way we just built three schools over the last 25 years, the same exact way. We have a rendering here as we did a year ago. I think we did get questions and feedback, and I think the feedback that we got mostly was that, you know, upwards of 80% of the people in Winthrop feel that there's a need for a firehouse. From information we got back, there was two major problems with the first proposal. One was the location, two was the acquisition cost. Could be wrong, you're never going to get 100% answer, but that's what we felt were the reasonings. We have, there's been a firehouse on the docket for probably 30 years, those stations have 140 years old, and we talk about the town, and we talk about the priorities of the town, you're putting public safety offices at risk, basically every day, every day. The conditions that they live in are deplorable, and I encourage, again, people to go in there. There are multiple things that we need to do and we try to continue to do. Doing nothing shouldn't be an option, and that seems to be the approach of some of the councilors. I think that we need to act, we need to ask the public. They say no, they say no, but I want to go on the hill, die trying than not to try at all. I do think that, you know, I listen to the concerns of constituents too with Pauline Street, and also looking at, you know, we asked the citizens, 55% said, it's a small sample size, but still, 55% said Pauline Street, 45% said Walden Street. I do think that, you know, and maybe shame on us a little bit, I don't know the full educational process from the public as a whole. I do think, you know, Pauline Street offers, I've talked to people, and again, a really small sample size, but their major reason for voting for Pauline Street is because they're sick and tired of seeing the middle school there. It's been eight years plus, and that seemed to be a big concern. They feel if we put the fire station there, we get rid of the middle school, which is true. There was discussion about gym space and potentially having a police station there. I don't feel that's an option. We have built three new schools, we have three new gymnasiums, but we have one less school. We originally had four schools and we had four gymnasiums. So at the middle high school, you have, for example, seven basketball teams, or eight, counting middle school freshman JV varsity, and you have one gym. So gym space is at a premium. The gym also facilitates Pox and Rec, which is a program that if we chose to keep it, and I think it's, it's an incredibly useful program for this small community, and it serves a lot of people, young and older, you know, there is no other location for Pox and Rec, and we have looked and...
You're going to drill up.
You're out of order, Jack. We have looked and looked around, and there doesn't seem to be any useful locations right now for Pox and Rec. So if that's a program that we want to keep, I think the gymnasium is incredibly important. I feel, again, cost is a major concern, and it always is, and it always will be, and it doesn't matter what the economy is, it's always, you know, people's pocketbooks are incredibly important. So for that reason being one, the cost is $4 million and change less at Walden Street. I think we do have a plan, and we've said it since day one, for the basketball courts to move them to the baseball field, it would create more open space, and it would eliminate a field that really does not do, does not get much use at all. We've had discussions with the school department, because the one team in town, the one Winthrop group of kids that use that field is the JV team, and it's always disturbed me that we have a beautiful new baseball field at the middle, at the middle high school that cost the town $650,000 that only the varsity gets to use. Every other sport, the JV and the varsity play in the same facility. Now, the reasoning for that is transportation. Transportation is a big cost, so if, you know, PBD's coming to Winthrop to play baseball, they bring both teams. They bring their JV and varsity. The JV plays at the field that's just, to me, atrocious, at Ingleside Park, the varsity plays on the beautiful field. The schools have agreed to say, okay, if we're playing the town, we will send the JV team to Saugus. They will send their varsity here, we send our JV. The following year, it switches around. So both the JV teams and the varsity teams get to play on the nice field. Why not? It's done in hockey, it's done in basketball, why not done on baseball? So that would, that would create more, to me, more green space. The plan is there, it is not part of this, but it would be the first thing we did, because it would also bring all activity, youth activity, athletic activity to a central location of park. It would include lighting, it would include fencing. So, you know, I think to not act is a disservice, difference of opinion. We have many important things coming on and doing. You know, we talked about infrastructure. You know, we talked about infrastructure over 20 years, 30 years, I think it's still 65 to 70% of the infrastructure underneath our town is over 80 to 90 years old. That's not something that we haven't done in the last 30 years. We've been incredibly aggressive, and thanks to Director Cala, thanks to the town manager, over the past 10 years to address about approximately eight, eight and a half miles of that, 47, 48 miles we have underground. So we've been incredibly aggressive, but we also have to be cognizant of the cost of that too, because that affects, if we're doing water lines, it affects water rates, if we're doing other infrastructure, it affects the tax base. So we are, I think, moving in the right direction. There's always going to be something. We are well aware, and we have done more in the last year and a half, not that it's a... Jack, are you...
I'm stressing out.
Satisfied? Okay.
Thank you.
If you could, thank you, Jack, for letting me lose my space. Thank you, I appreciate your great comments here. If you look at the work we've done over the past several years, I think we're moving in the right direction. If you look at Tilestone, Girdlestone, Girdlestone and Pico, we have a plan, we're starting the process. We've done more in the last year, that's been done. A lot of that is thanks from the neighbors for going out and continuing to push us to do it, but we have done it, and thanks to Councilman Munson for continuing to push on it. Morton Street also, we went, we were down there last week or two weeks ago to talk to the residents. Is it a perfect plan to have sandbags? No. Is it a start? Yes. It's action, it's some action rather than no action. So I am in favor of the Walden Street project.
Thanks.
I'm open to a motion to vote. Motion by Vice President Belcher. Second?
All right, no second. We'll put off fire station for another couple of years.
You've got a second.
No. Okay. Summit Ave pathway. Counsel Belt, Counsel Swope.
Hi. This came up in the other day. This is a, this is a pathway between Summit and the next street down. And the, is, that has requested that they put a driveway in there is here. So far, the committee and Max and I were on the committee, Rob was, our president got at that meeting. But also, I have done a lot of work in addition to that. I have read, certainly at her request, I certainly have walked the path. I have asked for all data from the police for the last five years, both in terms of, of the parking issues that are on all those streets. And there are more cars parked on those streets over the last five years. I have put a camera up on Summit so we can see that the concern that the abutters have is that there's drug use there, there's loitering there, and that's been a concern for them. And although they, they may have information, they don't want to, if it's, if it's an underage child, they certainly don't want to make that name known. So their information may be confidential. However, in the last five years, the police don't have a report that they have been able to document. That doesn't mean that doesn't happen. I'm not saying that because we have drug issues all over this town. It's not just in that area. But there is a camera up there. So I did ask today the police if they had seen any activity. I think it's quieted down in the last, probably in the last year. I've also certainly read all the emails. I've had a lot of pushback since Max and I did vote to allow the driveway to go forward in our meeting. Since that time, I've probably had 12 emails, at least 12 emails. They have all asked that we keep those pathways open. It is part of the historic, part of this town, as you heard from, from-
Brian Perrin.
He also has stated his concern. But those emails that I have received are all, they're approximately the same type of emails and the concerns that he expressed. In addition to that, Cassie has agreed to work with, with Cala, who is a volunteer group, to clean up many of the pathways. That is a concern because they are not often kept up easily by the town. And she has agreed, I've given her the, the pathways so that she can begin to work on that. And I do have a list, I think of most of the pathways are both public and private. So, the, the, what's before the town council is whether you should give this, the abutters, the opportunity to build a driveway. This would be a driveway that goes from Summit Avenue down to the next street. There's no question that there is a problem on that pathway, particularly on the steps and the, and the railings. I've walked the pathway in terms of the cement. That's not as bad. Just before you vote on this, I do want to add that after the last meeting, we did talk, I understand that this whole issue of pathways, public and private, needs to be taken as a whole. And I think Counsel Ilo mentioned to me, and he's, he's absolutely right, I, that we need a whole plan for this. I, by the way, I did, I did go to the Suffolk County Deeds Office, and they told me that I should get back here and do my homework here because we have, quote, "all the information." But I, and I did go to the assessors' office, and we did talk about that, but the assessors' office was also swamped with other things. So I do have the information about, about Summit Avenue. I don't have the information on all the pathways because you have to have the names of all the abutters to do that. You can't just go, you can't do parcels. It's, anyway, it's more complicated than I thought. But we do need, excuse me, a clear mapping of all of these things. But we've got, I think, a pretty good start on that. So before you vote, I, I understand that the concern for the people that have talked to me, they would like to keep the pathways. I also understand that those that want a driveway are finding it very difficult to park on Summit Avenue, as well as parking all over this town is really a big problem. And I think it's because we have added units that maybe we don't know about. Other people have added, you know, it's a, it's a two-family, two or three-family. It's, it's apartments, et cetera. So where they bought the, the unit, they bought their home thinking that they could easily park. Excuse me. They can't. They're having trouble finding parking spaces. So this is a concern for them, and they have spent money and time on trying to, you know, find a way so that they could take some of the cars off the road. That's where we are on that, and that's, if you have any more questions.
So can you just summarize-
Go over once more the, the motion coming out of the committee.
The motion that came out of the committee is that we would, we would allow the, both sides of, the owners of both sides of this pathway to build a driveway.
So a yes vote is-
It came out of committee. Between Max and I, we voted yes. And I'm just telling you, that's before I received a lot of, I mean, I have received a lot of concerns from the town members about, and they are all, please keep the pathways open. But it did come out of committee as a positive.
So a vote tonight.
So, so you have a motion coming out of committee.
That is correct.
That is positive recommendation.
To allow the, the owners to build a driveway.
Well, you can't give them permission to build a driveway, but-
Oh, sorry.
For, for the disposition of the land.
Yes.
Between, specifically between Summit and Sagamore.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's, that's only to the end of their part.
Correct.
It doesn't go all the way to Sagamore.
Okay.
But having said that, that means that, that would mean that we would cut off, once that driveway is built, that cuts off anything that you could, you can't get to the rest of that pathway because there's a driveway there. It doesn't go all the way to Sagamore.
From Sagamore down to Crest, you would be able to, but that part between the first two houses and the end of Sagamore, you wouldn't.
Right.
Okay. So that's what's coming out of committee. So that's what we're voting for. We're not voting on a driveway. We, we're not voting on a driveway.
Is the motion to abandon the easement just between, just halfway down? Is that what I just heard? That's different. I think that's different than what we voted on. I think we voted on banning easement all the way from Summit to Sagamore.
You can't block it off, yeah.
But that's-
So we wouldn't have a dead-end path.
I'm sorry, Max, but, but they, but that, but they were, the request was that they would, that would be blocked off between, between Summit and the end of their property. But if we, and so if we talked about that.
I thought we voted on the whole, I thought we voted in favor of recommendations to abandon the easement from Sagamore to Summit.
You would have to because you don't want to block off one end and then-
You don't want a dead-end path, right?
Exactly. Yep. That's okay.
Yeah. So the motion coming off, coming out of committee with positive recommendation is to allow the disposition of that easement from Somerset, from Summit to Sagamore.
That was, that was what we-
So that came out of committee, positive recommendation, does not require a second. It's on the table for discussion. Counsel DeMarco.
First off, as far as parking is concerned, when it comes to Summit and Sagamore, I actually think the path is a positive thing for parking because if you live on Summit and you can't find a spot on Summit, you might be able to park right on Sagamore and walk up the path right to your house. That being said, I am all for keeping history when it comes to a smoke quaint town. You know, I, I walk those paths with my daughter. I've gone up to Summit, walked down, go over to Crest Ave. You have a nice plaque there that explains the Narrow Gage history. You know, we, we do our best to try to preserve that, our history, and talk about it. I mean, that's why we have the train tracks in the middle of the center from the Narrow Gage. They're still there. And then, you know, after you pass Crest Ave, the, the park, you, you have the stairs that go up the hill into the Highlands. This is a historical aspect, something unique to Winthrop. And I, I, I don't think that two people wanting to put a driveway in, or two families wanting to put a driveway in, is reason to take this from the whole town. I think we need to preserve our history. And I, this is why I'm gonna be voting no on this motion.
Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. I think the history aspect is important, and it's important to recognize. But from the emails we've received, it's also very clear that this is still highly utilized by people in those neighborhoods. They use it to get to the Crest Ave Business District. And I know originally these paths were to go, like Counsel DeMarco said, to the Narrow Gage Railroad, but they're still heavily utilized. And I think they're very important to preserve. And I, I was honestly surprised at the outpouring of support for keeping it open. And, and I encourage residents to write to the council whenever they have thoughts because it, it is helpful to hear from people, especially on things like this that are neighborhood specific. So I, I think it's important that we maintain the pathways.
Counsel Ilo.
Basically, in the same, excuse me, place as Counsel DeMarco and the Vice, the Vice President, I, I can't tell you the number of times and the number of miles walked by my kids of places we called secret passageways and other kinds of games that we played. It's really part of the charm of this town and, and an important part of the history of this town. And I'm just against just doing something like this. It doesn't take much in terms of a little love and tenderness and polish to get some of these things into becoming really, really nice attributes in all the communities. When we're looking at the five-year capital plan, we should think about allocating some money, just not thinking about a restoration project. I mean, they are really gems, and they really cut to the history of this town, and I think we should not lose them.
Counsel Munson.
I concur with everyone, the, the three of you that have just spoken, to keep a public pathway for, for history, for utilization, for, I do think that course of action that would, I would love to see is to put it out to bid. I did walk it, and I agree with your assessment. It was more or less fine, except the steps. And they were pretty rough, but I mean, I got past them fine. I mean, it was daylight and I'm, you know. But I would say if we could put, you know, put something like that out to bid, just to see what we're looking at for, you know, a cost to fix, you know. So I think that would be, but that's where I stand as well.
Counsel Cost.
Yeah. As all councilors have already mentioned, you know, historical preservation in this town is something that we have to value here. Not just these pathways, but every, every part of town. We have to, I think, as we go forward, look at all aspects of this town. This is a rich town as it relates to history. Governor Winthrop, but aside from that, I know you don't want me to go off on a tangent here, but I don't want to set a bad precedent here where we're starting to give the, these easements away, and let alone the other historical aspects of this town because somebody wants to, you know, has a parking issue. I'm gonna leave the parking issue there. I can go off on a tangent there, but I'm not going to. But, yeah, I think it sets a bad precedent. And as Attorney Perrin has noted in his letter to the council, I stand 100% with him as it relates to those easements, all easements in town.
Counselor Chestnut.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I want to echo Counsel Swope's initial comments on the outpour of support for these public pathways. We, we did have two Public Works Committee meetings that would have welcomed those comments, but nobody really showed up or wrote to us at that point in time. That would have been heavily influenced, that would have heavily influenced our decision and what came out of that, that committee. Additionally, it would have been nice to hear from Counsel DeMarco at those meetings. I know he couldn't make it, but, you know, it's important that we get information all the way along this decision-making path and not just like the last day when everyone's set to vote. I, I, there is a missing piece of information that we asked for at those meetings, which was the, the question of the Sagamore abutters. Still an outstanding question. So, I mean, if we've, if we vote yes to remove the eas, to abandon the easement, then we really have half of a pathway with, with no certain future. So with that, I don't know if I can continue to support the, the motion that came out of our committee.
Any further discussion? Counsel Swope.
I just did, I did, Denise sent me some information about fixing a path. I know originally, Steve had said if we were going to do the whole thing, it would be about 150. He was, it's just an estimate. He didn't have an engineering.
You were talking about that one leg.
Yeah.
You're not talking it all the way down to Crest Ave.
Okay, 150.
We need to specify where, yeah.
We're not talking about a comprehensive plan.
Steve said it.
You gave me an estimate.
Yes, from, from, from Summit to Sagamore.
Yes, you did.
Okay. You were, you were talking about the whole path.
But then, if we're talking about the whole path, it was like 350 or something.
It would be north of that.
Yeah. So that's what I was about to say.
I just wanted to be specific.
No, that's what you told me. Okay, I got it.
Thank you, Director Cala.
But if we were just going to fix the steps, I think, Joe, you had worked on one pathway. It was about $60,000 for a set of steps, as I recall. So that's, Denise gave me an estimate just from a past experience about just fixing steps. So that's, that was obviously, if we're gonna do the whole thing, that would be a, a very big difference. And also, I did talk to Tony about the possibility of putting this kind of information in our, in our plan so that we can slowly change these pathways if they need repair.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing that a yes vote will allow the easement to be disbanded, and no vote would keep it the way it is. Roll call, please.
Counsel Chestnut.
No.
Counsel Costigan.
No.
Counsel Munson.
No.
Counsel DeMarco.
No.
Counsel Ilo.
No.
Counsel Swope.
No.
Counsel DeRozan. Vice President Belcher.
No.
President Luttey.
Yes. Motion does not pass. Middle school discussion demolition, I'm gonna put off the next meeting. New business, council attendance. So I know, you know, everybody has busy lives, but we take a responsibility, I take this responsibility incredibly serious, seriously. You know, I asked the council clerk for attendance for this calendar year. There's been 24 meetings. 33% of those meetings, or eight of them, we've had multiple councilors missing. Only 20% of those meetings, five meetings that we've had full attendance. You know, to me, that's unacceptable. The original charter had an abandonment clause, which was missing 50% of the meetings in a 12-month period. At last year's Charter Review Commission, one of the recommendations, which was accepted by the council, was to change that to 50% of the meetings in a three month period. So basically, if you miss three meetings out of six in a three-month period, you're considered to have abandoned your position. Now, that can be changed with a two-thirds vote of the council. So that motion was passed in November of '23. However, it had to go to the state and get approved by the state, which it did, and it was finally approved in July 29th of this year. So if we look from August, September, October, we've had two councilors that are technically, by the policy, have abandoned their positions. Now, again, if somebody made a motion, two-thirds of the council can vote, and that could be overlooked. Maybe they didn't understand it. Maybe there were outstanding situations, whatever it happens to be. You know, we talked a lot tonight about what the town deserves and what the town can afford and the direction of the town. And I think, you know, we don't always agree, but I think the town deserves proper attendance at meetings and proper decorum. but I think the town deserves proper attendance at meetings, and proper decorum, and proper work put into it. It's two meetings a month, for the most part, plus subcommittee meetings, but it's also, I know for me, and I know for some counselors, it's much more work than that. And so, the town voted on this policy to change it. I can't imagine the council wasn't aware of it. And looking for direction as to how we want to treat this, and, you know, again, it's the rule of the council, it's the rule of the public. So, I would ask the council for direction, if they wanted to make a motion to waive for the two counselors that have broken the policy, and starting forward, going forward. Counsel Ilo.
I would like to have us consider a waiver for the two counselors, but to a reset for next calendar year, we got one more meeting this year. And to make sure that every counselor gets a refresh memo on this policy, and not do any resets next year. I agree, it's important that we all do our best, if for some reason, our personal professional lives don't allow us to fill our commitments. The citizens of this town have said they want us replaced, and that's their right. But I think, given the change, how long it took to get the change, people frequently make vacation plans, or they make business commitments that cause them to travel, or whatever other reasons, but I would, I would make a motion to, the right word is to give, or whatever, for this year. But let's get a memo out, and let's start enforcing this January 1st of next year. That's my view, but I, let's make that a discussion item as opposed to the formal proposal.
Second. So, I don't think we're ready to make a motion, because I haven't named the individual counselors, and I think it would have to be in the motion. So, I will, I would consider a motion for the next meeting for that. Looking more for discussion, if people agree with that thinking. Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this up, and thank you for bringing it up in public comment. I think this is really important. We know exactly when the meetings are. It's in the council rules, it's in the charter. It's really important that we're here. What the abandonment clause doesn't tackle is subcommittee meetings, and I think that's something we should think about maybe including in council rules, because those are very, very important, and a lot of the work and discussion happens there before we bring it in front of the full council. And those are much smaller groups, right? The subcommittees are three counselors. So, if you're missing one person, it's a lot of work for everybody else. In the spirit of forgiveness, I would be open to waiving this for the year, but I do feel very strongly that it's incredibly important, and I think anyone who is up against the abandonment clause or approaching it owes at least to their colleagues on the council an explanation for the additional work and time and effort it takes for everybody else when someone is missing frequently.
Counsel Costigan.
Yeah, with regards to the abandonment rule, I think it's a case-by-case basis here. If it's blatant disregard for this council, it's a different story. If you've got somebody with a medical issue, if you have somebody who has an issue that's personal, I think that should be taken into consideration very strongly by this council here. We're all trying to do the best job possible for this town. And, you know, there is dedication, as the council president just mentioned. We're all trying our best to make sure this town is the best it can be. If somebody's faced with a medical issue, I think that's quite different from just a, a plain abandonment of the, of the seat itself. So, I would strongly urge the council to take that into very close consideration before, you know, any vote to, to cut and dry 50% as we go forward. So, I would recommend the council, you know, discuss a person's well-being potentially in private and executive session, as it relates to the removal of that council member, I yield.
Okay, and that was not the intention of this. That is why there's a rule in here, the two-thirds of the council. I'm just talking about attendance in general and bringing up the facts. Obviously, there are certain situations that have to be taken into consideration, but that wasn't the purpose of this. The purpose of this is just, attendance in general is not very good. Counsel Munson.
I concur with what Hannah said earlier. I do think that it's, the subcommittee meetings are an important part of it. It's really hard to get anything done if you don't have quorum. You can't get anything done if you don't have quorum. And when you have two people out of the three, there's really not a lot of discussion, and not a really good representation. So, I think the subcommittee rule should be included in that attendance. I think it's kind of like a team, if we're not here pulling for each other and showing up when you're supposed to show up, it's really hard to lead. If you think about all the votes that we've had, a lot of them come down to the wire. We need that, everybody here to do so. So, I will say, though, as far as attendance, though, when impromptu meetings are scheduled on non-traditional days, without the, like, review of the other counselors' availability, that is not exactly something that should be accounted against your attendance, like some of the recent ones that were scheduled for Thursday and so forth.
It's just regularly scheduled.
Regularly scheduled, okay. So, all right, my point's been made.
Counsel Tassinari.
Though I do agree with waiving this rule for this current year, based on the delay that we got from the Attorney General on approving this, this change of the charter, I, I don't, I think that the town and the people that we represent deserve their counselors to be present as often as is dictated by the charter change. I don't think taking individual situations into consideration, every single time there's a miss, or missing this required attendance should, should really be the business of this council. We're here to represent the citizens of the town, we should be here, representing the citizens of the town.
Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. Just another quick remark. It does afford for the occasional absence, right? It understands that people can be sick, or have obligations, or whatever. It's not saying you have to be here at every single meeting. I think the new updated version is fair, and I think it does afford people a life outside of the council while still ensuring that people are represented. I think it's important, and of course, in situations of medical necessity or whatever, you have to consider the pervasiveness of an issue, is it an acute issue? You know, there's a lot to consider, but I think the way it's written in the charter as it stands now is very fair. And I, I don't want to sound heartless, but I, I think that it's a pretty low bar to hit and maintain.
All right. Counsel Swope.
If there's a severe medical emergency in some situations, where a person, particularly if it's a three-month, and then it's half of the three months, I mean, if that person is able to, to overcome the medical situation within three months, does this, this rule would say that that person can no longer serve on the council? And so, not...
We retain the ability to...
There's the ability, that's what I just said, that there's an ability that's in there, that the council by two-thirds can waive it.
Thank you.
Right, okay. All right, so this will be on the agenda with a motion at the next council meeting. We're back, public comment, number two. Marcy.
Thank you. It's been a very interesting meeting. Thank you so much.
Marcy Hamilton, Precinct Two.
Oh, Marcy Hamilton, Precinct Two. I'm here, and will be here until the broken flaps and the pipes are fixed. I thank you for that, and I listened to what was going on, and it will happen. I am glad that there is an engineering process in place and a mandate for the drainage problem now. I would appreciate, and will expect moving forward, that each agenda has an update on the work being done, not only on Tyleston Road, but in all areas where the flaps and the pipes are being rehabilitated. In 2017, there was also a report that was done by Woods Hole with recommendations for the climate issues affecting the shores. We did nothing at that point, and we, we pushed off their recommendations, and now here we are with rising tides, broken flaps, broken fresh pipes, and we are in a pickle. So, I understand that, but I do expect, and I do appreciate the work we're doing, and I do, I'm not moving or selling, I'm going to have the pipes fixed, and we will rise above the water eventually. I, and put, we are now in a precarious situation, and I'm not going to get political, where fund real funds were going to be pushed to the state, or federal funds may be closed off, and the state will handle its own businesses. And that's the way it's going to be, and that's what we have to deal with. So, without getting into 3A, that we have to expect that there will be a shortfall of monies, and we just have to find a way to get the work done. And I'm sure we will. But I will tell you on a lighter note, our neighborhood on Tyleston Road buried a time capsule, 1999, just unearthed. And a lot of things were in there, it was very fun to do, the Bats, the Holdens, and the Hamiltons all did it when my kids were little, now they're all grown up. And here's what was in the time capsule. It's the Wicke transcript. 1999. It said, "People want to be proud of where they live. They want to know that their town department's rates near the top compared to other towns, and that has a lot to do whether or not people want to move to our town." And I think we all want the best for each department, and we have to give them the support, whether it be the DPW, the school department, or the town council, or town hall, wherever their support is needed, we have to rise up. And one of the key factors of why your surveys are the small amount of numbers that come back to your service, is because we created a town that has more people, more apartment-dwelling people. So, instead of, we're not connecting to them, we're not reaching out, we don't, they don't probably even read the transcript anymore, because it's getting smaller and smaller each year. But I can read the transcript, and I think we still have to look forward to creating a community, and making sure that everybody is responsible in every precinct to understand the issues, vote on the issues. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll continue with public comment, but one thing I forgot, I just, and we'll go into it more at the next meeting, but I'm going to be creating a committee on affordable housing, basically. It's going to be an advisory committee, it's going to contain one counselor, it's going to contain the town manager, a representative, and three citizens. So, if people are interested in that committee, I will announce the committee at the next meeting. You know, we can all agree that there's, you know, however it was created, housing crisis, you know, the good thing, I guess, the good thing is, I'm sure if you look in that paper, the prices of houses in 1999 are a lot cheaper than they were now. But looking at, you know, housing crisis, and looking at affordability in housing, which is something that 3A did not do, I think that's something that we can take a look at, and, you know, have some citizens with some experience to help us out with that. So, more on that at the next council meeting. So, continue public comment, please. Yes, Mr. Sacco.
Todd Sacco, Precinct Two. I guess first I want to comment, there's been much said about grants and money, and discussion about the troubles we might face being noncompliant. The alarming thing to me is some of the discussion coming from the town manager's position. And I certainly can appreciate a warning, I can understand that, but I'm starting to feel like the opinion is outsized, since the council has voted, and it failed. So, now we need to behave in the, in the situation that it has failed, and we need to move on and stop the fear-mongering. Because, again, with these grants that we're talking about, the MVP grants, the ones that were originally in the guidelines, we haven't had those grants in, I think it was seven to 10 years, we have not losing any money. And if, as citizens and council members, you're not alarmed by the fact that now they're adding qualifications for grants that they never required 3A qualifications for, that doesn't alarm you as bullying? I, I don't know what else to say. I mean, you have to ask yourselves a simple damn question. They're telling us we don't need to build, which I think is absolute bullshit, sorry about...
Can we just please refrain from the vulgarity?
They're telling us we, we don't have to build, but, so why do we have to comply? Exempt us too. What is the desire to force us and say, "We must crush"? You're also leaving out a lot of information, as a councilman, you talk about this respect to the Milton case. It is very clear to most legal experts that the guidelines are going to have to go through the judicial process, which means they'll actually have to be voted on, and it's likely that all of these other grants that they're tagging with 3A compliance will no longer be required. That is what legal experts are saying. I also find it rich, when we talk about the firehouse, that the precinct counselor who filed an illegal campaign violation against the former fire chief, precinct five counselor Joe, who sabotaged the original fire department, didn't want it, is now suddenly saying we have to work together to get the next fire department. Enough is enough. This council needs to stop working together. I'm disappointed that the discussion about attendance didn't include on-time, and didn't include decorum. Thank you.
Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack Dowd, Precinct One. Was mentioned about sandbags, hopefully, it's not really a summer, on Morton Street. Plus, Mr. Munson said that he's willing to fill the sandbags a couple of years ago, so hopefully that will happen also. The last thing I wanted to say, it was my first comment period, but I didn't get a chance. The money that we receive in mass port and mass water resource seems to be the only way we can make significant improvements in the town. Winthrop should get at least five times the amount we are getting at this point. Any other amount will be a major disappointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Lois.
I just want to make one more point.
Just again, Lois Baxter, Precinct.
Lois, when you reconsider about discussing the fire station, that you do consider maybe thinking about building a public safety on Pauline Street, because the police are outgrowing their office. It's old, they need a new place. We can do them in phases, because where would the police go if you don't build them, build it on Pauline Street? The space you want to put on Walden, put housing there then. But the police and fire deserve our support for a new public safety building. Wilmington, Nadek, Revere, Walden, they've all built new ones to combine them. It's time that this town thought about them. We've done everything for the kids in this town. It's now the police and fire that protect us every day of our lives.
Thank you. Yes.
Cassie Woodhouse, Precinct Six. I want to thank you guys, it's, you know, it is a big commitment, and especially all the subcommittees, and, you know, looking into it, our town bylaws don't say much about who gets paid what, but it does say, like, you get reimbursed for your costs associated with being a counselor, and I can't imagine that it's worth the money that is, that is being given to any of you for participating in this. So, I appreciate you all being here and continuing to contribute your time for our community. I do think that it would be a really helpful tool to have an estimate from a contractor, if we don't already have that for the fire station.
We do.
To include that, make it really, really clear for people, because I think that what happens a lot is people look at the headline, and they don't read the lower-level details. So, the more that we can make, like, one sheets and the kind of advocacy tools to really get people familiar with the information, and put them in the coffee shops in town, and do stuff like that, so that it is something that people can see more easily. That'll help build awareness and educate people passively, not just at a meeting that they have to commit to going to on a weeknight or whatever. I'm really excited to hear that there is an affordable concept kind of floating around with the council, that I have worked with low-income housing tax credits and state programs here, and, you know, originally, when I was living in California, I'd been doing affordable housing for 12 years, there are always program requirements, there are always going to be thresholds and guidelines that we have to meet to receive state funding. That is unfortunately now for, for the mindset of some counselors, including 3A. So, I think we do have to have that as part of that conversation, if people want to move forward with finding paths to affordability in this town, but I'm really excited that that's something they're looking at, because there are a lot of opportunities out there that we should be taking advantage of. And that's something that, you know, information sharing is important for, too. I think that there's a lot of folks who go about their day and don't always get online, and when they're getting online, it's a very limited, you know, touch point. So, we want to try and get as much information shared as quickly as we can, so that folks can be informed about these things that are happening here. And lastly, transparency and accountability are really important, so I do encourage you, when you figure out whatever it is that you're moving forward with, as far as attendance, that you make sure that everyone is aware that that has been updated. that you make sure that everyone is aware that that has been updated because it's something I've been looking for in the bylaws and there hasn't been a change. So, I'm glad to see that you guys have received that feedback from the state, but it was like a little bit like what's, what's going on, where are we in that process? So, thank you for the update on that.
Thank you. Yes.
Charlie Scott, precinct six. I'd like to thank the council for considering the request that we had for the path and I thought that there was serious consideration, so thank you for that. However, I'd like to add that not only should the stairs be replaced, not replaced, but repaired, um, as I've said before, that they're very dangerous, but also lighting is an important thing. And not only on, on the path that I'm talking about, I can think of in the Highlands, you know, the stairs that come, you know, that come down a very steep section, very poorly lit, it stretches. So, the consideration should be also the cost to provide lighting and there should be a program for providing the lighting in all of these paths. And if these paths are important, then the cost to maintain it, i.e. shoveling in the winter and sanding should also be included. It shouldn't be that it's accepted that these paths are not shoveling.
Thank you. Yes, Mar.
Marcy, precinct two. In regards to the firehouse and the location, I'm not opposed to either one, but I think we're, we're doomed for failure there because of the feedback that you didn't get. And I think 55% want it in one place as opposed to 45%, I think you're doomed for failure on that debt exclusion again for that. Um, I just, that's my opinion and I don't care where it goes, it needs to go somewhere. They deserve it. Secondly, brief history lesson, about six months before the words 3A were ever spoken here, myself, Marcy, people from Pico, Morton, were in this room getting a commitment from you, Jim, that you would see this flooding issue through. And I think it's disingenuous for people to attach flooding to 3A, okay? The flooding has nothing to do with 3A, absolutely nothing. We were in this room and Mr. De La Hanty went on his soapbox at a planning board meeting and has since reiterated in another letter that, you know, the flooding is part of 3A. It's not, okay? I never saw that man in any meeting prior to the planning board meeting, okay? It's not a 3A issue. It is a flooding issue completely separate from 3A, okay? We were in this room, Marcy, myself and everybody else, begging the people to do something for us, six months before the words 3A were ever spoken here. As a matter of fact, it was item number two on the agenda the night it was set. So, I just want people to stop trying to attach their wagon with flooding to 3A.
Thank you.
Gina Edget, precinct six, 76 somebody else. I know that you said that you put the camera there. Is that going to stay indefinitely?
What you feeling about that? I thought-
No, I would love it to stay.
Yeah.
Because I have seen, and I have on video and I'm not showing anybody, of somebody shooting up heroin. There was a huge drug bust there and it's probably not listed in Winthrop because it was probably due to the drug enforcement task probably in either Revere or Boston. So, if that-
I planned it to stay, that's why, I thought it was-
No, that's perfect.
I thought it was a good idea because you mentioned-
I mean, they knew that there was a camera, that I had my bring camera there, that it does even say that it is being videoed, but they still did what they did.
Okay.
That's all, so.
I will-
If that could end as well as what Charlie said, if the Department of Public Works could take care of the pathway, not just the railings or the steps, but even the concrete, the sidewalk itself, there's gouges in it and stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcy.
This one, Marcy Hamilton, precinct two. I just want to ask, I forgot to say it in my last comment, do we have an emergency plan in case of a catastrophe in this town? An updated one?
Yes.
I don't know, I just want to know because it could ha, it could happen.
We do-
And I'd like to see that too, please. Thank you.
Not a public comment. Anything on Zoom? I like that idea. There is something on Zoom?
Yep.
Karen's got her hand.
One second, Karen. Karen?
Oh, Karen first, okay.
First of all, I was on, Karen Shabbos, precinct two. I was on the ordinance review when we did this change. It was not intended to punish anybody and we certainly did talk in length about illness and extenuating circumstances. So, I, I want you all to know that it was these scheduled meetings and it goes back to when counselors chose not to come. Not, they didn't have a reason, they just chose not to come. And that was why we did that, that whole thing, please. My other thing is I am extremely, extremely disappointed in your vote on the fire station. I cannot believe that nobody would even second it to allow a vote to happen. I hope each and every one of you can look tomorrow in the eye of a Winthrop firefighter and tell them why, again, the fire station is being postponed. I've been very involved with this for a long time, I'm not going to go into it again, I've said it over and over and over again. I do not get involved with anything that I do not believe in. I believed in a new middle school, high school, I was very involved with that. I believed in a new Millerfield, I was very involved with that. I believe in a new fire station, I was truly hoping for a public safety building, but as you know, we got knocked down on that. So, we went from a public safety building to a fire station. As far as other fire stations that are being built around, if you look in Revere, the one that's being built at Point of Pines, that money did not come from Revere, it came from all the building that they're doing in Revere. That's how they were able to build that fire station. And these firemen in this town are firefighters, I'm going to say men because we do have a female, firefighters in this town deserve this fire station. I don't care where you put it. I prefer Walden, but if you don't put it there, I don't care. But I think every one of you, I hope, again, that you can look in the eye tomorrow of a firefighter, firefighter, and tell them why next year they still will not see a new fire station.
Zoom.
Okay, we have Lisa Howard, like to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Can you hear me?
Barely.
No. Louder. Next up, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, but-
I'll reach out mine.
Much better.
All right, there's a little feedback, I'm not sure if it's coming from, I don't think it's coming from me, but, um, so Lisa Howard, precinct two, as well as the superintendent of the school halls. So, through public comment, I'd like to address the comment that was made this evening regarding the override and to do so simply for clarification purposes. The comment that was made was regarding the council receiving a question from the school committee with no explanation attached to that question and there was some perceived disappointment as such. So, for clarification purposes, the need for the override has been reviewed, discussed, and explained in multiple forums by multiple people for multiple months, always open to the public. I personally held three open meetings for question and answers for anyone from the community, inclusive of the town council. I assumed that the town council was educated and understanding and satisfied with the information they had regarding the need for the override. When the vote went to the town council, if there were questions or need for clarification from any council member, please understand that you are a member of the school committee sitting on your town council. So, if you could not find the time to attend any of the multiple forums offered by the school committee, you for sure had the opportunity to ask one of the members of your own committee why there was such a need. Of course, if you were not in attendance at the actual meeting where the town council voted for the override to be on the ballot, you did have a packet of information in your hands prior to that meeting and time and opportunity to call me or any other members of the town council for clarification. My comments are certainly for a point of clarity. From the beginning of the override, through the entire process and up to the day of the vote and continuing on, the school department has shared, inclusive of the school committee, transparent and detailed information about the history of the school's funding, our strategic and successful management of the limited funds that we have had over the past several years, and the urgent need to seek an override to avoid significant cuts to staffing and programs for the Winthrop public schools. I'm shocked that any members of the council would be stumped by the need for an override and would not understand the history of the need, but I am more shocked that if members felt misinformed or ill-informed, that they chose not to seek that clarity. This is my personal opinion as a superintendent of schools and certainly would be open to speak to any member of the town council to clarify the need and the desperate need for the school department to have a fully funded school budget for the students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Let's see. Vicili Malios?
Thanks Denise. Vicili Malios, precinct one. I'm not even going to mention one thing about 3A. I just want to give a shout out to the DPW, they did a tremendous job these last couple of days putting up fencing around the cemetery near River Road. It looks beautiful, it made the neighborhood, it's an upgrade. So, I, I do appreciate the hard work that they put in this week installing that fence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Capuccio.
Hi, Kathleen Capuccio, 49, World Car House. Um, Lisa Howard really said everything I wanted to say. I'm absolutely in, well, I guess I shouldn't be in shock and awe by Councilor ILO anymore, but Councilor ILO's comments, pretty much inferring that the school committee's response, if you will, to information needed on the override was a two-sentence email is absolutely outrageous. I think Councilor ILO owes Superintendent Howard and all members of the school committee a public apology for his outrageous comments. Decorum has always been an issue with Mr. ILO and it continued again this evening. Lisa, you know, gave them the need to say, but I know I was at more meetings than Councilor ILO was when the school committee was asking for and was talking about the need for the override. And the fact is, there was plenty of information out there. And again, Mr. ILO, I'm, I'm truly just disgusted with their commentary and again, you owe Superintendent Howard an apology and you certainly owe our dedicated members of the school committee an apology. My second is really very dismayed that Council President Luteri could not even get a second on the fire station. Um, I just, I, you know, we hear a lot about, you know, grant money in connection with 3A and, you know, I'm obviously not going to go deep into that, but what I think people are really missing, and this has been stated so many times over the decades now, is that our firefighters are working in non-OSHA compliant facilities. They, they do not have access to the proper gear that they need to store in our facilities. It is absolutely outrageous that Council President Luteri could not even get a second. If people on the council are still confused about the need for the firehouse, then you really need to do some really deep, dark thinking because if you still are confused and you still don't have enough information, then you really might want to think about if you're effectively doing your job. But enough is enough. I do not want to see one of our firefighters, God forbid, get hurt or worse in one of our fire stations. They are the ones that come to protect us and run into our homes if they're burning or there's an emergency. At this point, I'm not sure why frankly, a firefighter hasn't tried to do the house. Is, is that what it's going to take for action to happen? Enough is enough. Thank you.
Kathleen.
Recording in progress.
Any more Denise?
No, that's it, I'm sorry. That's it.
Sorry, Todd Sackel, precinct two. I did want to mention by the way, a couple of things. One, I'm excited to see that the bike lane to nowhere construction is underway and I'm looking forward to riding up and down over Revere Street Hill going nowhere, super excited for that. Um, I also want to add, I heard some discussion about being afraid of going up against the state, you know, can we have personal liability? My response to that is if you're a leader, an elected official in this town, and the, and the overwhelming number of people in this community have said to you in one way, shape or form, directly or indirectly, that they don't want 3A and you can't handle the heat, resign. And Joe, pretty sure there'll be a lot of happy people if you do that.
Any other comments? What about Cassie?
Cassie Woodhouse, precinct six. I think there's been a lot of conversations tonight about a lot of issues that are happening in this community and people acting like we can pick and choose what we can do to make our community better, but the fact of the matter is that if we don't address all of the issues that have been discussed tonight, we are not going to have a successful future in this community. So, what the outcome is and what the, what the solution is for each of those problems might need to be discussed more, but, um, the, the, I'm only going to support this issue and I'm not going to say anything about this issue mentality, I don't think that that's helping us get anywhere. So, I hope you all think about that.
Thank you. All right. Public relations. First, I want to just give a shout out to Winthrop Chamber for the tree lighting ceremony. It was incredibly well attended. I have to give a big thank you to Winthrop Foundation for being a major supporter financially of that process. They're unique opportunities in Winthrop and, and that's one of them. So, that's 35-plus years of, of the Chamber organizing that event. So, a big thank you to them for that. Also, just with the holiday season coming, town hall will be closing December 24th at noon, closed on the 25th, open on the 26th from 8:00 to 4:30. Again, closed on the 31st at 4:30, closed on January 1st, open on the 2nd from 8:00 to 4:00. Did you have something? No, okay. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by- Second. Second by Council Debaco. All those in favor say aye. Aye. You guys have it.